And to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could I have a motion to open the public meeting for the September 29, 2023 meeting of the Sag Harbor Village zoning board of appeals? Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Great. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes from the August 15 meeting?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Oh, and anybody have any corrections or anything before we? Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Great, we have next on the agenda is some correspondence requiring action. And first, we have Lawfleur 152 Hampton Street requesting a one-year extension on their variances. This has been, I guess, in the planning department for a long time, so could I have a motion to approve a one-year extension on their variances?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Great, thank you. Next, we have 64 Jermaine Avenue, oh, I guess, oh, and is it on the corner? 18 Joel's Lane? Okay. And they're also requesting a one-year extension. Could I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Great. Now, we're going to move on to old business. And just so people know, most of the projects in old business are being adjourned to the next meeting. So if you're here for any of those except for 133 Main Street. So when is the next meeting? Seventeen. So could I have a motion to adjourn 55 Howard Street to the October 17 meeting?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Great. Could I have a motion to adjourn 20 Lighthouse Lane to the 17th October meeting?
I'll move it.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Could I have a mo- I guess we need to make two motions. Could I have another motion to adjourn 20 Lighthouse Lane to the October 17 meeting?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Could I have a motion to adjourn 369 Madison Street to the October 17 meeting?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Could I have a motion to adjourn 80 High Street to the October 17 meeting?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Great. Now, we are at 133 Main Street.
Good evening. Dennis, down across the street. So the last time we met, we were talking about two-story building and we drew that request. And it's a one-story building existing. All we're gonna do is convert the ground floor of the building from garage space to we can change the front, take out the garage doors and put in a new store.
Right, so we're through SECRE and?
This was reviewed by House of Publican Board. He's gonna determine that the actions, the tank two actions, so it didn't require any further environmental review.
Okay.
We just need the parking memo from the planning board, but then, you know, we can get that as well.
Okay, so we can rule on this?
If we respect the parking, it's garage, you know, providing two parking spaces. 39 square feet, that's less than 400, then we provide two parking spaces, like Lynn's grandfather.
So it's?
It was reviewed by the local department, so it was a change from parking in the code from retail is one space for every 200 square feet. I think storage is one for every 500 square feet. So maybe that's why it changed, but I need to talk to the building inspector. He didn't agree with that, his grandfather.
Okay, so they may need a parking?
Three new spaces they need.
So they may? Right, so they may need a parking variance?
Yes, for three spaces.
Right, so is that?
I didn't look at the space or the area. You'll have to talk to him.
Well, it says it right in the, in the, in the notice, 339 square feet, where 800 square feet is the parking. Garage 339 square feet. So it's less than 400, so it'd be 130, 200. It's gonna be used for retail.
The garage is 20 by 20.
20 by 20, yes.
You said 339.
Excuse me?
You said 339. The garage is 400 square feet.
Yeah, but someone's saying here it's 339. I wonder where that came from?
And 20 by 20 is 400.
I think that there was a problem with the square footage originally because it was taken to the inside walls or something. It wasn't done correctly. Yes, it wasn't done correctly. We noted that in our discussion when this came around the first time that the square footages were not correct. Because it's a little bit over 200. It's 20 foot two by?
There's nothing in the chart indicating.
By 20 foot two.
So let's assume 339.
So?
Yeah, it's on the survey too, about the parking.
Yeah. It's this thing though.
Encourage the use of buildings to face church streets.
Right.
To be converted to retail or some other use, maybe for this house. And it's been slow to make it. I think Gav Chavet is on the second one.
So do any board members have any questions? I guess what we're ruling on is exactly what are we ruling on here? We're ruling on the three additional spaces for parking?
No, there's a long list of variances.
Right, right. Well, no, that's not part of it.
Based on a two-story.
I think the first one is 800 square feet versus 400 and some extra.
Right, because, right. And then, and that's it really, basically, because the building doesn't change. And parking, and that's what we're down to, correct? Because it's under the, the amount required for retail space. It's big, right. So that's not, is that included in our, our variances? The side, the 1.2 side yard, or is it just the 800 square feet to 400 and the parking?
It's there, the 1.2 is all. So it's minimum, since it's an establishment, we can have a 39 square feet where even square feet is required. Expansion, we can make a fully front yard setback of 2.6 feet where 20 feet is required. And then, pre-existing, we can have a structure side yard setback where it's 1.2 feet, that's required.
Aren't those there when it was a two, aren't those there because it was a two-story building and being expanded from a non-conforming?
Well, the first three of them, the remainder are just setbacks.
Right. But, but nothing's changing. It's pre-existing, non-conforming, right? So we don't need to rule on that. Wasn't it there because it was a two-story building and represented an expansion, but?
Right.
With, yeah, so we're only ruling on the parking and on the, the square footage, right? So the, the square footage down here is incorrect.
In the notice.
In the, in the notice. So in the decision, that will get corrected?
Yes.
Okay, so do any board members have any other questions?
I do. So this says retail. I wanted to know if retail is connected to the primary retail business. So technically, there are other garage-like structures on that street. Could that business owner lease out one of these to create more retail? Is that what you're saying?
The only other structure on that street is the former I D Christie's Liquor Store, which it was owned by I D's as a antique store. He's got that large, one-story bomb-like structure in the back that could be converted. At one time, he wanted apartments, but he never followed through with the application.
Right. Right. Because you're just, your example, the Crimoris building is an office that's connected to the main business. And the American Hotel is office storage connected to the main business. Right, right. So it's an extension of the business, and I was wondering if this proliferates or?
No, the lady that's renting the front building, your gingerbread house, is not gonna be the tenant in this house.
Okay.
This is gonna be Lynn's Chavet's school.
Okay.
At least that's what it explained to me.
Great. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak to 133 Main Street? No, no. So do you have anything else to add, Dennis, before we close?
No.
Okay, great. Anything else?
No.
Okay, could I have a motion to close the public hearing on 133 Main?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Great.
Second, ma'am?
Me, hi.
So I'm fine with this. I don't know how other board members feel.
Yeah, I'm in favor of granting the variances requested.
They did all the things that were necessary. I agree.
Great. So could I have a motion to direct our attorney to write a decision in favor of the variances for 133 Main Street?
I'll make that motion, granting the variances.
Could I? All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Great, now we're moving on to new business. And first up is 41 Redwood Road and 26 Cove Road.
This one is gonna be open and then adjourned because I asked for a single and separate, which unfortunately just requested today, so they didn't get that in advance, but I need it before you can proceed with doing this application.
Okay.
Then we have new plans anyways.
There was one technical thing that I noticed on the pyramid drawings.
Did you review the new plan?
Yes, but it doesn't really matter because it's the same. On the pyramid drawings, there's no reference to elevations. We need the first floor elevation shown and noted, and the grade elevation shown and noted. It's just a drawing in space. And also, it would be helpful to your case if they separated out the pyramid in each spot because it's not all in one spot, but it's all lumped together, so we can't tell. I think there are four different places. Yeah, that would be helpful to your, to your application. And I don't know, Vale, did you have any other comments, just technical comments?
Yes, can you open it?
Oh, I'm sorry. Could I have a motion to open 41 Redwood Road and 26 Cove Road?
I'll make a motion to open.
Second, all in favor?
Hi.
Sorry about that. Do we need to go through that again, or?
No, it's fine. You just asked for some, some additional information, which is on our team.
Okay.
See it, but we are, I do want to limit discussion.
Yeah, no, we're just, these are just items that we noticed, so they won't have to come back again. I don't know if you had anything else. I don't have one.
No.
No?
No.
Right on here in case, I don't know if you can answer the question still, I know we're not having discussions.
These are just, these are just?
Think what would be helpful, there's a drawing discrepancy on this plan. There's a line that says 30-foot front yard setback, which is the rear, but it's not the discrepancy I'm picking up on. It's dimensional, because if I take a 30-foot measurement from that line to the edge of the corner of the building, it doesn't scale to the property line.
And is that, that's on the architect's plans?
Yes.
It does. So in addition to the pyramid, if possible, to show front yard as it relates to the 30 because it it's, it's off.
Great. Could I have a motion to close? I'm sorry, to, sorry about that. To adjourn the public hearing on 41 Redwood Road and 26 Cove Road?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. Next in new business is 20 Washington Avenue. Could I have a, a motion to open 20 Washington Avenue?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Great, could you state your name and address for the record?
I'm sorry, I can hardly hear him. Can you please speak up?
Yeah, the speaker is unfortunately above you. It's above you.
Jeffrey Hand, 20 Washington Avenue, Sag Harbor, New York, 10963.
Great, are you an attorney?
Yeah.
Okay, could you raise your right hand? That's where you, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Great, thank you. You can proceed.
Uh, so we are asking for you to consider a variant for a going to charge, you know, my wife's several teachers, and we bought this property and decided to do the renovation on our own based on finances. And we've, we've really tried to work very hard with the building department. They've been amazing. And one thing we misstepped with is we did not get clarification on the retaining wall on the property line. So I will chalk it up to just not made experience of making a mistake on that. The reasons why we were doing that is because it's a very steep pitch, a lot of water runoff through the property going down into the back of the yard, so we wanted to create a space that was more level. Ideally, this is going to be a property that our 26-year-old daughter is going to be living at. It's rent controlled, because it's very difficult for young people to stay. We did, we put a lot of our time in, all of our money into this house, and I do apologize for that.
Could you explain to me the, the wall you're talking about?
Uh, sure. It's in the backyard. It's a long.
It's right here.
Yeah, I know, sorry.
I think it's the northwest, where we're looking at, it's the northwest section of, of the property line. We did get a letter from our neighbor stating that she had no problem with it. She actually?
Did you have that in the?
She actually, actually likes it. And then we, we did, we did put some shrubs and some greater real on there. Little park alleys, so we, some onion potatoes, we have a tree garden, and they just, so we used some of our trees to kind of be right alongside the retaining wall.
You can't really see the retaining wall at all. I mean, I was there, and it was hard to even find it. I don't know if you guys tried to find, yeah.
Is that just one portion of the wall or the total?
It goes along the side, along the back, we're in compliance with the back, and there is a building issue on the other side. It's just where we're out of compliance on the northwest side of the house.
I have a question. What was on the, the original plan submitted to the building department when you got the permit?
Originally, it was fence. And we decided as we went along that the pitch and the grade was so severe that in discussions with our, our landscaper, decided that we would go ahead with a retaining wall. And, and again, my mistake was I did not check to see if a retaining wall and a fence were both
It's about a three-foot drop or so from your property to the adjacent.
It's pretty severe. I think it's actually, it's, yeah, it's, it's at least three feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, the pressure was pretty severe.
So the architect at the time didn't recommend a, a retaining wall there?
Actually, after we got our, after we got our building permit, you know, a friend of mine, who's a roadrunner, he's another member of the A, he's a landscape architect, you know, idea if you're having concerns about the runoff would be a retaining wall. So it kind of happened afterwards. Maybe I'll chalk that up to just?
Okay.
An experience.
It wasn't presented to the building department, the retaining wall wasn't presented, right?
The fence was, because he wants?
The fence was, right, right.
Frontal attention.
Right.
By the building department that we were, have compliance with that.
I mean, it's not an ideal situation, but it's a minor.
And we do have a letter from a neighbor? I don't have a copy of them.
Yeah.
I didn't get a copy of them. Oh, it was email, okay. Don't, don't worry, I don't need to see it now. Okay.
It was submitted.
Did you get it? Did you get the letter? It wasn't in favor?
I didn't notice the letter, honestly.
I did.
You did.
Yeah.
Yep, and it was unequivocally in favor?
Yes.
Okay. That's all the questions.
Anybody else have any questions? Yes, is there anyone from the public who would like to speak to 20 Washington Avenue? Do you have anything to add?
Just that I do apologize for not getting that approval prior to, and I just do appreciate the building department being so so also forgot this whole practice, because we are new, and I do thank you for your consideration.
Um, so could I have anything else from the board before we close the?
Nothing.
Okay, could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for 20 Washington Avenue.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay. Um, I'm, it's not an ideal situation, but I'm fine with it. Basically, you can't see it. This wall.
That's correct. The detriment to the applicant would be a hardship to have to undo something which is at the ground level, so I'm okay with it.
And since the neighbor is fine with it.
And there's a letter.
Neighbor's fine with it. It would be very expensive to take it apart, and it answers a, a real need to not have runoff going onto the neighbor's property.
Right, it's probably more beneficial to the neighbor having it than not having it.
So I'm in favor of granting the variance.
Anyone else?
I have no objection.
Great, could I have a motion to have our attorney write a decision, favorable decision for 20 Washington Avenue?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Great.
Thank you.
You too. Great, next on the agenda is 5 Washington.
I am Jeff Sharon from White.
Could I have a motion to open the public hearing for 5 Washington Avenue? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Great. And you've appeared before, before, correct, on this morning? Great. No, and so we need to, okay. Could you state your name and address for the record?
Jeff Sharon from Nineteen Oaks in Woodland.
Great, could you raise your right hand? Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Great, thank you. You may proceed.
After I was here, I was asked to redraw plans to address pyramid. And so these five variations on my survey, I had to blow the shot. One of the ones, I was also asked to shift the house to help minimize pyramid inflections, to help provide planning plans. At the recommendation of Ward, I stayed on that. Setback down on Washington side is almost 21 feet per recommendation of, no more than, or more than 20. And also, my White House side is 35 feet setback, which is not compliant with the local code. I guess the two other, so that essentially eliminates all the infractions in the pyramid. And the other requests, I'm just trying to fast forward, the egress windows and the portico on the, on the White House side.
Oh, egress windows from the basement. So do we have a dimension? Oh, it's 11 feet to the side property line for the egress windows? Those aren't noticed. Well, they, they're technically in the front yard, they'd have to be 30 feet, and they're hmm, I think the number is 20.95, or no, it was 20.66? I don't know. It's hard, it's hard to tell because the dimensions don't. Can you tell which dimension goes to the? It's, I'm not sure. It's 11-ish feet on the opposite side, which is too close, because the side is probably where, well, 15, well, basement area weighs 17 feet, where 32 is, so we're closer now. Front yard setback, okay, so the front yard setback is okay, because we had 17, we're 32. And we're more than 17. Well, I don't know. The area ways for the basement, all of those bump outs, we're trying to figure out what dimension goes to those because the, the original notice was on the, on the front yard was 17 feet, but the house has moved. Well, no, this should be true for this. This is not the old one. But I don't know where 17 is. I don't see it. But on the other side, on the opposite side, they also exist, but they're not noted. Right.
They, each, each window well measures three foot eight, which is the code minimum.
Right.
So three-foot window well plus an eight-inch thickness, you've got 29, 20.95 feet, plus three foot eight.
Right.
So that's the answer.
So it's, okay, that's, side is fine. That's 17.
Which, which side? I'm sorry?
Let's face him, Washington.
So on the opposite side, are, are the, well, there's a difference in the code between windows, wells that just are for light and wells that are for access, I believe. So on the property, on the, which is property, oh, on the neighbor's property line, are those also needed for egress?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so those weren't noticed. So we need to have that.
Renoticed.
We need the dimensions put on the survey.
Yes, because they're not actually on the survey. No.
Or we need the dimensions actually put on the survey and then we didn't notice it.
Right. So we need them on both sides though, just to clear it up. The, the one side looks like it was noticed, but there's no dimension on the survey. The other side doesn't have a dimension and it wasn't noticed. Um, other than that, um, I think that this, you know, ended up pretty much what we wanted you to do and seems fine to me. I don't know.
For other comments?
I have no other questions.
This is a demonstration of the pyramid law. It's really well done in terms of how.
Good guidance.
Well, thank you for the compliance because it's a great illustration of how this, uh, should be represented. Um, I have no objection to the area well request, given that there's a stockade fence here, but since this is a technicality where he has to go back, that seems to be the last ingredient to be dealt with.
Uh, Dan?
You can have the house and, you know, did what we had. So thank you.
Great.
No objections.
No, I, I agree. You compromised and did what was necessary.
Uh, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to 20 Washington Avenue or 5 Washington Avenue? I'm sorry. 5 Washington Avenue. No? So, um, I guess we need to, we'll have to adjourn.
Yep. So we've submitted surveys showing a setback for the window wells. We can, um, adjourn to renotice and then if the board wants, I can still prepare a, a decision for next week, or even for next month, sorry.
Right.
For next month. And then once you, uh, read, we have a new notice, you know, we open it with a new notice and you send it to the public. You know, if there's no one from the public, we can close it and then you have a decision ready.
Okay.
It won't delay.
I think we should do that.
So. So, so before. Before we get into that, does anybody have any, the, the only thing that is really of a concern are the, um, window wells for egress on that property line with the adjacent neighborhood. And it's about 12 feet, you said, from the property line? Roughly, it's, it's going to be about 12 feet.
12 foot.
So does anyone have any objection to that? If that's sort of in the area dimensionally that it comes up?
Code costs for 15?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I don't have an objection.
No objections.
Okay, great. So, um, could I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing on 5 Washington Avenue to our 17 October meeting?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
And now could I have a motion to direct our attorney to write a decision pending our approval at the next meeting based on the survey that will be submitted? For the, um, for 20, uh, I'm sorry, 5 Washington Avenue.
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, you have a question?
I have a question. Can I show you one thing on, uh, on the plan that I have?
Uh, do we have to do?
It's still open.
It's still open. Yes, you can, we adjourned it, but it's still open. Sure. Yes.
This was just another version that instead of an egress window, um, on the neighbor's side, it was an egress stairwell.
Right.
Would that be okay to substitute instead of the egress window?
Well, it might change your lot coverage stuff. Um.
All right. I just wanted to ask now.
I don't see any lot coverage on the.
No, it doesn't. Yeah, there aren't any, um.
There's no lot coverage on the survey.
We have lot coverage on the, covered, on the cover sheet.
17%. Building coverage is 17% and.
You have building coverage, but no lot coverage.
Right. There's no lot coverage shown. So we need lot coverage shown. So if you're legal. It'd have to be under 25% for total lot coverage and standard 20% for building coverage. So it's, it's up to you because it doesn't project anymore towards the, as long as it doesn't project more toward the neighbor than the other things. Um, I don't know if there's any reason. One way or the other.
He will make the lot coverage. This is a 9,750 square foot lot and 20% of that you are well under.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think it's, yeah.
Okay. So it's up to you, but, but you just need to get it in quick. Okay? Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, now we are at 207 Jermaine Avenue. Um, could I have a motion to open 207 Jermaine Avenue?
I'll make a motion to open 207 Jermaine.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you. Could you state your name and address for the record?
Anthony from 68 Industry.
Great. And can you raise your right hand? You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, so, um, this house is a, uh, this property is on the corner of Jermaine Avenue, uh, across the street from the, uh, high school. Um, there are two structures on the property currently, uh, the, the main, the main house, which is a two-story house, uh, built around 1900 and a, um, story garage, which is also, it's also built around 1900. Um, both donate or it's both the house and the garage are considered, um, contributing, uh, to the historic district. And that was part of our thinking in terms of how we, uh, went about, um, addressing, addressing the project. Um, so the proposal here is to take the, um, existing, um, house and connect it to the garage, the one-story addition. Um, and also add a front porch to the house. Uh, we feel fairly confident that the house originally had a front porch. Uh, you'll note that both the front existing front door and the existing side door basically step off into nothing currently. Uh, that's because there was one support there that got removed. Also, most of the houses in the immediate vicinity have, uh, front porches. Um, they, both the house and the garage, um, exist entirely outside of the, uh, building envelope, uh, such as it is. Um, so that is what is triggering the need here for, uh, variances. Um, so we have a, um, 3.1, uh, foot, uh, setback uh, for the addition from the, uh, northwest property line. Uh, that is basically just taking a continuation of the existing, uh, wall of the structure and extending it out towards the garage. Um, and then on the, um, south side of the property there, we have a 5.4 setback for, uh, back porch, which is, uh, just as they described. Uh, wrapping around connecting the front door and the, um, side door. Um, once again, because of how, even though the addition is only one story, just to be clear, it's just a one-story addition. Uh, because it is supposed to that property line, it does still trigger a pyramid, uh, variance. Um, the, the bulk of this pyramid variance is, uh, 552 square, uh, cubic feet is just that, uh, northwest wall where it comes close to the property line. And the pyramid also flips a little bit of the puyola and the, uh, uh, front porch, a couple of the front porch posts. Uh, but the bulk of it is the, um, that north, um, northwest elevation. Um. Looks here. Oh, and there, then also a, we are proposing a swimming pool. Uh, the, the tendance of the swimming pool will be conforming to setbacks, but we would like to connect that to the house, um, uh, with the patio and that patio is throwing us a little bit over on the, um, on the, uh, lot coverage. Um, uh, calculations. Uh, the building coverage, uh, is still underneath, under, under, um, under code. Uh, it's just the total lot coverage. Yeah.
Great. I, I just had a few, um, notes here. Uh, I know you said, uh, it's stated in here that you're under in terms of GFA, but could you somewhere in here include the calculations for the GFA? Just, we're trying to get everybody to do that, just so it's on here.
Yeah, I can, I can get this.
And then on the pyramid drawing, we will need indications of the first floor elevation and its number and the grade elevation and its number, which, which are.
40, 40.
Right, but they need to be on the, um, the pyramid.
Oh.
Your colored pyramid drawings don't have anything. Yeah. Um, and just so you know, both those elevations on there, because I know it's a pretty flat site.
Yeah.
Um, uh, the other thing is where is the pool equipment going to go? Uh, because there's no pool equipment shown.
I think we can do that. Um, and we can probably, we should be able to get that in the conforming location.
And another thing is, uh, it looks like you're building over the septic system. So we just want to make sure that where the new septic is going. If there's a conforming.
Yeah.
But is there a conforming location? Uh, there's not too much property left.
Yeah, it'll be in the, um.
You make a.
South, uh, excuse me, southeast, uh, corner.
So could you just make a note on the survey where that would be going?
Does that have to be the final health and market approval? Because I think there's still a few weeks.
No, no. It just, just where you think it's going to go. And yeah, yeah. It's just what we want to make sure that with all of these things, you're going to be able to fit a septic system on there. Um, and then the other issue, which will have to be renoticed, is that because the garage is an accessory structure now, it's flipping to a primary. So it's, it's becoming a primary structure because it's part of the house now, not an accessory. So it has different setbacks. So that will have to get renoticed for its variant, its, um, its closeness to the property line. It, it's, it's, um, the setbacks for the garage is an accessory building, aren't grandfathered for it as a primary structure.
All right. Sorry, I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, so that, that it, it's, it's closer.
We have a 12.6 feet, non-controlling structure expansion, 50%. You can tell us what the percentage that's been noticed to.
Okay.
I mean, the, the, the.
The percentages for the expansion of the GFA.
The, the garage itself isn't expanding. It'll be the same footprint. So.
You're changing it from.
It's a use change, sort of.
To GFA for the house, right?
Yeah.
You're adding it to GFA the house.
But I think the total GFA of the house, so they did check that. I think the total GFA of the house is still under 50% with that garage.
Yeah, you still need to meet this. They, they need to grant it as a variance, so it's a code.
Okay.
Yes, it's an offset.
Can you just sort of help us kind of sort out exactly what we, what we need there?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can imagine.
So that would need to be stated somewhere in your drawings, both the GFA and also the, the determination of the 50% rule.
Because of the lot, how, how have the neighbors accepted what is being done?
Um, I mean, we noticed it. We haven't, uh, heard any feedback from the neighbor so far. I don't know if any are on the, um, on tonight on Zoom.
Yeah, it's very close. I mean, it's very, there's just a driveway basically between your, your house, this house and the next door house. It is very close.
Be helpful to have a, a letter from them if the owners could approach them.
Okay.
Anyone else?
I'm actually, I'm actually on. I own 207.
Yeah, if you just wait, just, if anybody else have any?
No.
Okay, great. Um, so if there's anyone to speak?
That's the owner.
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to say I reached out to.
I need to, um, get your name and address for the record.
Patrick Gallagher. 207 Jermaine Avenue.
Hey, can you raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, great. You may proceed.
Uh, I, I have two contiguous neighbors. I have had the ability to speak with one of them, uh, no problem at all. The neighbor who you're speaking of, who is directly a next door, basically, uh, does not occupy that house. So I've had a tough time getting in touch with her, but I don't think it will be problematic for me to get a letter if I need something to document that there, that she's okay. Um, I don't think that that would be a problem. Is there any suggested language that you would want in the letter?
No, it's just, we would like to hear their opinion. If they approve it, it, it's in your favor.
Just an acknowledgement that they've seen the plans and that they have no problem with it.
Right. Or have a problem with it, whatever they say.
And the people there now are renters?
Uh, she rents it over the course of the summer and her children come out from the city and stay there in the winter sometimes, but. She owns another house in town.
Yeah, I saw two or three cars in the driveway today. So I, I assume it's rented or they're guests or something. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay. So, uh, just so I'm clear, so a letter acknowledging that, um, what we intend to do and whether or not she is favorable on what we intend to do or not.
Yeah, just what her opinion is after she's seen the, the, your proposal.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, I can get that.
Great. Uh, anything else, Anthony?
Um, any, um, I mean, other than these kind of technical issues, any, any comments on the overall, um, scheme?
It's a small lot and, uh, so far it looks like you've done an admirable placement.
Anyone else have any comments?
Especially if the most immediate neighbor is in favor of it or doesn't have a problem with it, then I wouldn't have a problem either.
Yeah, I mean, it would be interesting to hear that because it does create quite a wall along that one property line. It's almost like a. Well, it's a wall, basically.
Right.
Almost right on the property line.
Although we, we note that there's a, there's a six-foot stockade fence there.
Yes.
Running that whole length.
Right.
You know, and as noted, this is just a one-story addition.
Right.
And I think a lot of people in this kind of situation would be tempted to just put a two-story addition off the back of the house. We're, we're not going to those kind of.
We noticed that and appreciated it. And it's one of the reasons that, that at least I don't have a problem with it. And it's just, the letter from the neighbor is just kind of dotting all the i's.
Sure.
Also, a neighbor could be against something and we might still grant the variance. So it's, it's not.
Yeah.
It's not definitive.
No, it's just, it's more information.
Just to see their objection or their positive.
Anyone else have?
No, I, I agree with, uh, Tim's comments. It's a one-story addition and stairs with minimal impact. So there's a lot in its favor. And I think that's important to hear from neighbor.
David, you have anything?
Good, uh, minus addition to a top house.
Yeah, so it's.
Screening for the poor is that.
Um, then we can talk, uh, we can talk about that, that, um, yes, it's a very difficult site. Um, um. The other, the only other issue that would probably good, be good to have would be some concept of what you're going to be doing for screening from the pool, for the pool from the, from Jermaine Avenue. Um, because at the moment. You know, eventually you're going to have to have something for the architects review board anyway.
Sure, that's going to be.
Yeah. Right. I mean, whether there's going to be a fence and planting or whatever it's going to be. What do you think? Um, and then we didn't really get, is there anyone from the public that wanted to speak?
I don't see anyone.
Okay. Uh, Anthony, you have anything else? Nope. Okay. All right. So, um, could I have a motion to adjourn 207 Jermaine Avenue to the 17 October meeting?
So move.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey. Now we move on to decisions. Our first decision is 45 Hillside Holdings, 45 Hillside Drive West.
I'm sorry, Liz, I, I, could you just speak up a little bit? I'm having trouble hearing you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, that's better. Thank you.
Yes, that's better. Thank you.
So this is forty-five Hillside Holdings for forty-five Hillside Drive West. And the purpose of the application was to allow an asphalt pool to remain where it was constructed, where variances are required. The subject property is comprised of nine thousand three hundred seventy-five square feet. It's located in our twenty zoning district, where twenty thousand square feet is required. It's not conforming with respect to lot area and lot width. The applicant constructed the pool in the wrong place. Originally, he didn't require variances, but then it was constructed eleven point six feet from the rear yard. It was supposed to be constructed fifteen feet from the property line. Therefore, a variance in the amount of three point four feet is required from this board. Um, and also, a deck was supposed to be eliminated pursuant to a fourth historic preservation or structural redevelopment determination. But the applicant preferred to keep the deck, and therefore, a variance was necessary to allow the deck to remain six point two feet from the pool, where ten feet is required. And while the board does not condone asphalt structures coming before it seeking variances, in this case, the relief required is minimal and the detriment to the applicant would be an an economic cost to the applicant would be substantial compared to the impact to the community or the neighbors. The board also required screening in the form of additional approval on complete screening, which is shown on the survey, referenced in the decision for the reasons set forth in the written determination. The board hereby determines to grant the variances.
Great, thank you. Could I have a motion to approve the variances described for forty-five Hillside Drive West?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Great, thank you. Next, we have sixty-two Franklin Avenue.
Subject property is comprised of seven thousand five hundred twenty-five square feet, located in our twenty zoning district, and where twenty thousand square feet is required. The lot is fifty feet wide, where a hundred meters is required, therefore, not performing with respect to lot area and lot width. The application is for a pool and pool house that requires variances for total building coverage to be twenty-one point one percent, where twenty percent is permitted, so we need the amount of one point one percent. And the total lot coverage to be twenty-six percent, where twenty-five percent is permitted, therefore, we need the amount of one percent is required. The board board went through the five-part test and for the reasons set forth in the written determination, hereby determines to grant.
Great, thank you. Could I have a motion to approve the decision for sixty-two Franklin Avenue as written?
So move.
Second? I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have forty-six Terry Drive.
Forty-six Terry Drive. This was an application, again, an undersized lot with respect to lot area and lot width. So it's not deforming for those purposes. The property is also a corner lot with two front yards, one on Terry Drive and one on Meredith Avenue. And as a result, variances were required for the proposed swimming pool and pool equipment. Specifically, the application required variances for allowing for the proposed front yard setback for the pool to be twenty-four point seven feet from Meredith Avenue, where thirty-five feet is required. Therefore, ten point three feet of relief was required, and also to allow construction of a swimming pool in the front yard, where accessory structures are prohibited. And finally, to allow pools meant to remain at ten point two feet, where fifteen feet is required. Therefore, relief in the amount of four point eight feet is required. Here, the board considers reasons set forth in the written determination found in the application that provide hard tests and grant variances.
Great. Could I have a motion to approve the decision for forty-six Terry Drive as written?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next is five Green Street.
Five Green Street. This is to construct a new roof dormer addition to the existing residence. With the lot, it gets undersized. Property is six thousand one hundred twenty-eight square feet. And it's fifty-five feet wide, so it's undersized with respect to lot area and lot width. The house is listed as a return construction in the historic district. And pursuant to a variance decision dated May eighteen twenty twenty, this board approved of additions that require variances. Included in that relief was eight hundred twenty-six cubic feet of pyramid leave for the original addition. And then the applicant came back with this application, seeking an additional one hundred fifteen cubic feet of pyramid leave to change the existing roof line to be consistent um with the house, the existing roof line of the house, and also the other house's needs. The applicant presented the proposed roof line change to the Board of Historic Preservation Architectural Review, and the team that board supported as well. And so they're adding a hundred thirty point eight seven cubic feet of area to the roof. And they require, they require a hundred fifteen point one four cubic feet, including the pyramid. And for the reasons set forth in the written determination, the board provides the eight-five part test and hereby grants it.
Great. Could I have a motion to approve five Green Street decision for five Green Street as written?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Our last decision, fifteen Bluff Point Lane.
This is an application to construct the first and second story additions to the existing residence. The variances required are the proposed rear setback for the two one-story additions to be twenty-two point five five feet, where thirty feet is required. Therefore, relief is necessary in the amount of seven point five feet. And the proposed rear yard setback for the second story dormer addition is twenty-seven point eight feet, where thirty feet is required. Therefore, relief in the amount of two point two feet is necessary. The subject property is fifteen thousand square feet, and the property is still undersized, and it runs on Upper Side Harbor code. It has street frontage of Bluff Point Lane. Since it has frontage on the water and not a street, the 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 board found that the actual placement of the existing residence on the on the lot is what created the need for the proposed rear yard setback variances. And for the reasons set forth in the written determination, the board hereby determines to grant the variances. And determines that it meets the five-part test. Additionally, this this application will need um review and approval from the Harvard.
Great. Great, thank you. Could I have a motion to approve fifteen Bluff Point Lane as written?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Do we need a motion for that last little bit of thing or no? Okay, so I can close the meeting? Could I have a motion to close the public meeting?
I'll make a motion to close the meeting.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you.
Have a good night.